I call the September 21st, 2021 regular meeting of council to order. Councilperson Blake will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
.......................................
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Approval of minutes. Council, you received the minutes of the September 7th, 2021 regular meeting.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
The minutes of the September 7th, 2021 meeting have been approved. Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-056.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Lindupelder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak, members of council. The ordinance that you have in front of you includes a standard advance from the general fund to the Springbrook Park Fund to cover expenditures for Phase 1 and 2. And it will be replaced back to the general fund when the grant revenues are received. There's appropriation adjustments include the Stockbridge Dartmoor Fund additional expenditures, which were approved by a change order in August. The largest part of the appropriation adjustments include expenditures for the American Rescue Plan Fund. The city has received just under $2 million from the American Rescue Plan during 2021. One of the allowable uses for this fund is to replace revenues lost during 2020. The appropriation adjustments included in this ordinance are so that the city can use the funds to continue to provide strong city services and jobs. We're planning to use these funds for payroll expenditures spread across all city departments, and we are following the U.S. Treasury regulations in the U.S.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-56 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-057.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Penn Care Incorporated for the purchase of one 2022 Braun Chief XL ambulance and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this ordinance and the next are both budgeted items for our fire department. Chief Cyril's?
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak, members of council. This request is to replace the rescue squad at Fire Station Number 5, which is 1152. 1152 will then be moved to revert reserve status to replace a 2004 squad with 146,000 miles. The new squad will be a 2022 Braun that meets our requirements. The squad will be purchased $11,000 under the money that we budgeted, and it'll be bought on the state term schedule with fire levy funding. The chassis is in stock, and the estimated build time is six months, which is pretty good for this type of purchase. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
And after the last two ordinances and $837,000 later, council is grateful to the voters and member-manner for approving the fire levy. Ordinance number 21-0-058 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-059.
An ordinance amending Part 9, Title 1, Sections 919.01, 919.03, and 919.99 of the codified ordinances of the city in 2006 as amended related to permit issuance of the removal of a tree within the public right-of-way or upon public land, increasing the penalties for violating Sections of Chapter 919 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak, please discuss changes this ordinance would affect.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Council, you're all aware, and we've had a work session on this, I think within the last year for sure. And I know that each of you, especially the ward councilmen, have had a number of occasions where constituents have approached you about the desirability of removing a tree. The way that the ordinance is laid out now, as you're aware, the Public Works Director has the authority to issue permits on that removal in a right-of-way. And for the most part, we have pretty much held to the position that there's been very little use of discretion in the sense that we've looked at whether or not a tree is dead or dying, is so in such disrepair or at the end of its life cycle that it's noticeably about to die, or a good chunk of it already has, or it represents a dangerous situation as a result of that. We get a lot of requests, and council is very much aware of it, about those people who just don't like it. They want a different species. They want, you know, it's bumping up the sidewalk, or there are tree roots established, or tree roots getting into their sanitary lines or their storm lines, and for a variety of reasons. We generally don't honor most of those requests. And Mr. Schweickert, I'm sure can share with you a lot of stories in the field on that, and he's happy to answer any questions you might have. But I think through our discussions with council and our experience in the field, we found that there are some scenarios that probably are worth calling out that I think over time probably will help to support our overall urban forest. And so some of the changes that you see before you go to that point, to ensuring the long-term health and diversity in our urban forest, as well as recognizing that perhaps there are some implications toward our other public infrastructure that have to be acknowledged with some of these street trees. So the first change is in item 1, this is paragraph C of 1991903, which is the permitting section. And that simply adds language to the existing number 1 that says the tree is damaged or diseased to an extent that is unlikely to survive or presents itself in such diminished form so as to noticeably misrepresent the species. So what we tried to do is craft language that is as, what's the best way to put it, as precise as possible when we recognize that sometimes trees are just so chopped up, a tree that's topped by a utility company, a tree that has lost half of its presentation because it has been, half of it's gone because of a winter, a storm or a lightning strike. Tree is still viable, it's still alive, but it doesn't look or is uncharacteristic of what we would normally expect a reasonably healthy tree to look like for a particular species. So it gives a little bit more discretion to the Public Works Director to consider those situations. The next change was down in there in item number 7 of paragraph C. The species is nearing the end of its predictable age and is desirable to replace it with a younger tree. There are a number of neighborhoods in, well, there aren't a number of neighborhoods, but there are some neighborhoods in town that are very fortunate to have very old, I'll just call them old growth, I mean, it's not old growth in the sense that they use the term out west, but a tree that may be close, you know, 50 to 100 years old in our neighborhoods. And they're healthy, and they're large, and, you know, they can cause some problems with sidewalks and that, but they're healthy. What we foresee in the long run is that some of those trees probably aren't going to last a whole lot longer, although they look good right now. And the concern that we have is that, you know, a tree that may be at the end of its life but still healthy and is accompanied along that neighborhood by trees of the same size and age are likely to go all in big, in bunches at some point. And so while we don't like to remove those haphazardly, it may be, I think it probably is in our interest in the long run to start seeing some younger trees planted in some of these areas, as well as some diversity. We all saw what happened in some of the older growth in the community with the ash trees when the ash borer came through. Pine Gate, Mr. Krieger is probably the best example of that, where we just saw neighborhoods completely devoid of trees because they lack diversity in the species. We don't do that any longer with our newer subdivisions. We seek, we utilize different species and we like to think of as better varieties, hardier varieties that will survive in the tree lawn. But Mr. Schweickert, maybe you can speak to the typical age of any of these trees in the tree lawn.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, the city's growth period was in the 60s and 70s. You know, a lot of those trees that went into that time are nearing the end of their life cycle. Other even newer areas had trees planted that just didn't have as much, as long a life cycle as some of the earlier trees. So we're seeing a lot of areas where the trees are just near the end of their life. So, you know, I think in the interest of, you know, looking at the macro level of the urban forest, what's here before you really serves that better. It's, you know, shifting away from a micro focus on each property, each tree, to more of the urban forest as a whole, with the urban forest being tree lawn trees and the trees in our city parks. So, you know, I think in having the ability here to allow the removal but also require the planting of the new tree is, you know, definitely in the interest of the urban forest.
And Mr. Schweickert jumped ahead to that paragraph D, which essentially adds the bold type that the director may require the replacement of the tree as a condition for approval. And I can tell you that in any case where we would be approving a mature, an older tree near the end of that life cycle, that would in every case be a condition. In almost every case, the city would agree to pay for that tree and put it in on our own after the resident would remove the existing tree. You know, we're at a good point in our city and in our operations. This council has supported, and we have committed significant funds every single year to tree planting, both in our public lands as well as in our tree lawn area. Mr. Schweickert can tell you, we have a hard time finding places to plant them in many cases. So we plant a lot of them on our public lands and have it, it's harder to find the right-of-way areas where the trees don't already exist or where people want them. So that would be paragraph 7. And then finally, paragraph 8 is actually something that I think is the easiest one and makes the most common sense here. We simply have, there are some areas, and there are not many, but there are certain trees planted in places where they probably should never have been any tree, where you have an oak tree planted in a four-foot wide tree lawn area and that, you know, and it's destroying the curbs and it's just misplaced. And in many of those cases, the trees are, die anyway, but if they've survived, they certainly can cause a lot of other damage to our infrastructure and to the private property owners' property as well. So that one is fairly straightforward, and I made mention of the changes in paragraph D. The other portion of this came as a discussion that was the penalty clause under 919.99. And I know that some council members have taken a look at this and offered some, wanted to take a second look at maybe having some discussion on this, and we're fine with that. I think the law director and I are both agreed that the current penalty provision has been abused, quite frankly. A $500 penalty just simply is enough of motivation for people to not take it upon themselves to remove a healthy tree even after, and we have many, many cases of this over the years where people have been disapproved for the removal, and they've gone ahead and done it anyway. And they end up in court, and honestly, you know, the penalty provision is, doesn't serve as enough of a deterrent, and it's probably not the wisest use of the efforts of the law department or our administrative time as well. So we're looking, we're simply looking for something that would create a greater disincentive for people to act on their own while we're allowing some greater flexibility in the ability to remove some trees that, in cases that we just discussed, are perhaps some of those situations that we've all encountered, and I include council in that, when dealing with the constituency. We're happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, this legislation will go to second reading, but this is a time for discussion now or at a future reading, or if the desire of council to have a work session, we can also do that. So it's your pleasure.
Mr. President. Question for the law director.
Go ahead, Mr. Marn.
Joe, we talked about this a little bit in the past. So as of right now, if someone arbitrarily in their own will cuts down a tree and we tell them not to, you go to court, they're fined $500.
And court costs and...
And court costs, takes that into account. Now, does the resident pay that or the person that cuts the tree down?
Sometimes they're one and the same. More often than not, though, what happens is the contractor who came in, the tree contractor, obviously did not pull a permit. And you have instances where, you know, homeowners tend to rely very frequently on contractors as to whether permits are required or not. And so you may get a homeowner who, in good faith, believed that the contractor was doing everything that they should have. Again, the old adage ignorance of the law is no excuse, but again, we sort of understand that there are certain levels of culpability when, in terms of people's behavior. So one of the real challenges of this is that contractors come into town, they know or should know that a permit would be required to remove a tree within the tree lawn, they do it anyway, they take their money, they're gone, and tracking them down is difficult. Very often homeowners don't want to provide their names, they're not motivated to provide their names. And, you know, for the contractor, you, your risk is, I might get hit with a $500 fine and I can continue to do it if I price that into the cost of removing a tree. There really is very, very nominal disincentive to unscrupulous contractors.
So I guess my question would be, what would be the process then? When would we determine that we're going to seek retribution from the homeowner or the contractor? How do you decipher what the correct route is?
Well, everything's a case-by-case basis. We charge only upon probable cause. You know, the administration does a review, often, you know, they're alerted or doing, you know, routine, you know, other travels, they see something going on where a tree, you know, you see a stump. Very often, people come in for the permit, they're denied, they go ahead and have the tree removed anyway. Now, that's pretty flagrant in terms of that violation, when they're told, no, it's actually unlawful and you can't do it without a permit, they do it anyway. The charging decision in those instances is fairly straightforward. You know, cut, you know, these are, these are very often, you know, residential subdivisions, and, you know, contractors can come in and get out of there without, you know, any city personnel, you know, going down the street and catching them, or a neighbor who may see something and question it, calling it in. So, you know, it's, it's hard on the contractor's side of things to give much of an answer because it's been extremely difficult to go after the contractors because we have to identify them, and identifying them is the problem. It's historically been a problem.
And last but not least, based on what you currently proposed, what exactly would the fines be, costs?
Maximum, correct. For a first-degree misdemeanor, a maximum fine is $1,000 punishable by up to 180 days in jail unless there are sanctions, including probation, community service, obviously replacement of the tree. For a second-degree misdemeanor, maximum $750 fine, up to 90 days in jail, again, those additional sanctions. For a fourth-degree misdemeanor, a maximum $250 fine, up to 30 days in jail, and again, those additional sanctions such as probation, community service, et cetera.
What was second-degree, Joe? I'm sorry. What was second-degree?
$250, 90 days, I think.
Second-degree, $750, 90 days.
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake? I really have a problem with the penalties on this. I think my direct comment is this council a number of years ago adopted a tree contractor registry.
Right.
And when these tree contractors come in for their yearly registry permitting, whatever that process looks like, my understanding is they're told that it is our rule that you don't take down a tree lawn tree without a permit. So I would imagine if this problem is still existing, then we've got a lot of contractors coming in and just bootlegging in our city, and we have no enforcement on that. But I'm asking that this go to a first reading tonight because I just have a problem with a homeowner who takes down a tree and may not have malice in his heart or even an understanding that we have this law, and they could potentially look at jail time. I'm not saying that that would happen, but that's why I would like to see this go on first reading and maybe have a quick work session just to see how the rest of council feels. Maybe the appropriate action is if $500 doesn't sting enough, maybe $1,000 on that penalty. But I think this needs a little more time to hash out. But maybe we need to strengthen that tree registry rule that we have.
Well, again, if I may, we have people who will not disclose the names of the contractors they hired because we've got no teeth to sort of say, hey, look, if you cooperate, give us the name, you know, you're not the fish I'm after. I've told people this. These contractors came in there, did something unlawful, put the money in their pocket, took off, and now there's a dead tree and they're left here for whatever reasons, maybe their friends, family, there's a variety of reasons why people would not want to disclose the name of the contractor, but they're more than happy to pay the 500 bucks, pay their court costs, have the tree replaced with something they wanted anyway, it's the reason they took down the old one, and that contractor escapes enforcement. So giving this a little bit of additional teeth as against the homeowner gives us the leverage in negotiations to also get their cooperation, name the contractor. If you take that away, frankly, and again, council's prerogative is to do that, I get that, but there are going to be instances where that behavior is going to recur. And these contractors, as you indicated, councilperson, they do know better, they should know better. And so a nice specimen tree, perfectly healthy, just comes down. Now, that against council's judgment ultimately as to, you know, the level of protection. But again, I do strongly recommend to give us some teeth, which currently it's very, very, very lacking in this ordinance.
Mr. President, if I could just respond?
Go ahead.
See, I think where my problem lies is that tree lawn belongs to the homeowner. That tree belongs to the homeowner. Now, we can enforce them trimming it 14 feet above the roadway, seven feet above the sidewalk, and I'm fine with that. But when somebody takes down a tree that belongs to them, I think we need a little bit more time to explore what an appropriate penalty is. I mean, I'm a tree lover, and I love to see canopies of trees as I drive down streets and manner. But I just have a problem with the penalty on somebody destroying their own property. That's my position.
Mr. Krieger?
Does this, yes, does the administration, like, let's say the tree is bulking up the sidewalk, do we replace that at our cost, or do you make the homeowner replace it?
During the sidewalk inspection program, if that tree has caused the problem with the sidewalk, then the city pays for the replacement of those sidewalk slabs.
Okay. And the same question relating to sewers. If the tree roots start to invade into the lateral from the house to the main, do we take care of that?
No.
Why not?
I mean, at that point, I mean, the...
Let me interject if I can on that, Mr. Schweickert. The city does not take responsibility for sidewalk damage. Under the code, the city does not take responsibility for sidewalk damage caused by a street tree. We do that as part of our pedestrian safety program as frankly, because it's a way to help offset the cost of that...
We're not replacing them?
But again, there's a distinction here. If I'm, if my sidewalk goes bad and I, and it's out of compliance, somebody complains and it's cited by the city, I will have to replace that on my own. The only time the city interjects, it comes in and would help offset that cost, is through the pedestrian safety program. But as council's aware, it's about every 10 years we're going to come through that neighborhood. So we generally do that as a courtesy, as a way to offset some costs when, because we've established this program. We don't pay for tree roots that invade the sewer or any of the utility lines. We don't, I don't frankly know of any city that does.
I'm still a little unclear, if the roots take the sidewalk up, do we pay for it or not?
Only within the context of the pedestrian sidewalk program, we pay for three ups, three slabs for the intended purpose of doing it in a manner through working with our contractor in an effort to preserve the street tree.
But councilman, the key thing for residents from their side is that they are liable until the tree, the sidewalk program comes around, that cycles around and says, oh, this is by, if someone gets hurt, they're liable for the injury and their insurance.
So again, back to what Sean said, so I'm liable, but you're not going to let me cut it down.
Well, you're responsible for keeping the infrastructure intact.
Well, what I did hear you say was, if it impacted the infrastructure of the city, the curbs... the pedestrian safety program. But as council's aware, it's about every 10 years we're going to come through that neighborhood. So we generally do that as a courtesy, as a way to offset some costs because we've established this program. We don't pay for tree roots that invade the sewer or any of the utility lines. We don't. I don't frankly know of any city that does.
I'm still a little unclear. If the roots take the sidewalk up, do we pay for it or not?
Only within the context of the pedestrian sidewalk program, we pay for three slabs for the intended purpose of doing it in a manner through working with our contractor in an effort to preserve the street tree.
But councilman, the key thing for residents from their side is that they are liable until the sidewalk program comes around, that cycles around and says, oh, this is by, if someone gets hurt, they're liable for the injury and their insurance.
So again, back to what Sean said, so I'm liable, but you're not going to let me cut it down.
Well, you're responsible for keeping the infrastructure intact.
Well, what I did hear you say was if it impacted the infrastructure of the city, the curbs and stuff, you would let them take it down. But if it impacts their sidewalks and sewers, they can't.
They can replace the sidewalk to get back out of the liability issue.
Yeah, I understand that.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
Actually, I've seen us replace the slabs, cut the roots back, and the tree's still there. That's pretty much what I've seen every time I've seen a tree and a root, sidewalk problem.
It's not always the manner that we use, but it's often...
It's high majority of it, yeah.
Yeah.
The tree stays.
Sometimes we'll arch over that and match up the higher slabs on either end and it's a little bit more involved.
Yeah.
Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. But it's all of us in an effort to try to do the best job during the course of that program to preserve the tree.
Right, right.
And honestly, and I think council, because this council was, most of the members of this council were on board when we adopted that pedestrian sidewalk program. It was frankly a way to help offset the cost of what we knew was going to be a big price tag for a lot of people. I mean, if you consider where we are now in the city to where we were, what was it, Dave, six, seven years ago when we got started? It's night and day, but council, we spent well over $100,000 every year of general fund money for this, well in excess of that every year. And the homeowners are spending about as much, or in some subdivisions now less money than what we'll spend because we take care of the compliance on the intersections. But when we started, when you think about, in fact, your old neighborhood, Councilman Monro, their case in Cato was section one, year one.
I remember.
And half of this, some folks had two-thirds of their sidewalks that had to be replaced. So we knew that because these areas had been neglected for so many years that there was a lot of work to be done. And that was, and so we came up with a policy that said that we will help offset that cost with the secondary benefit of maintaining the street trees. So if you can wait long enough for us to come through there, you're going to get up to three free slabs that you don't have to pay for. If your sidewalks are dislodged by your street tree and nobody complains and nobody trips and hurts themselves and you're willing to take that risk and liability on yourself, well, that's an individual homeowner's decision. You know, we go after the utilities. We've had a long-term working relationship with the water company and we take on who helps us replace some of those slabs when their utilities are at fault. But generally speaking, sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowner.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. Mr. President, a question for the law director. Joe, could you clarify a confusing situation that you often get confronted with, and that's the ownership of the tree lawn. It's been referred to as a public right-of-way, a utility easement. Who owns it? Who doesn't own it? Who's responsible for it? Can you perhaps?
Sure. In all instances, the homeowners adjacent are responsible for the care, the maintenance of the tree lawns that are adjacent to their property. It has to be seeded, a tree has to be maintained, sidewalks. It gets planted a little bit differently depending on where you are. The older subdivisions, residential, those are true public rights of way, meaning that the city doesn't own the fee simple, but the right-of-way is effectively total dominion and control over the, be it 60 feet wide or some other dimension. And the city's ability to regulate the right-of-way is not limited in very many ways. So ordinarily, those trees within the tree lawns are the personal property of those homeowners. So if it is permitted to come down, the wood would belong to them, so to speak. There are other areas in the city where, and they're not really primarily residential, but there are other areas in the city where it is not a right-of-way, but what you consider a right-of-way is actually a separate parcel. And the city does own the fee simple. We're seeing that more in commercial areas. A good example would be the recent Route 20 widening where federal funds required that the city acquire fee simple interest. And so if you're familiar with that project, that is not traditional right-of-way, that is fee simple ownership of those areas of Route 20. Again, you see that more in the commercial areas. I'm not really sure of any residential subdivisions where you may see it being fee simple as opposed to right-of-way. I hope that answers your question, sir.
Well, you had mentioned that the tree lawn is adjacent to their property. And then you went on to say that most of the properties, tree lawns are, would you say most of the properties, tree lawns are owned by the property owner in the city, the residential?
In residential overwhelmingly. I'm trying to, I'm stretching to think of an example where we may have a residential subdivision where it's actually a fee simple ownership of the roadway and adjacent lands. But overwhelmingly, those are right-of-way.
Okay, then, one other question, then. Getting back to the penalty element of this, obviously, your office has had to go to court with probably numerous, I think it was mentioned, there was numerous cases where people were cited and had to... Do you know that the penalty fee is not to exceed 500, but do you have an idea about what the average, if any of them actually get to court, what the average penalty is?
It varies. Generally, where we've got an instance where someone was told, they were denied a permit, we try to get a maximum fine because again, their behavior is fairly flagrant. They basically said, fine, I'm going to do it anyway. You can get instances where someone is fairly shocked that it would have to come down, that they had to get a permit prior to it coming down. Obviously, in those instances, the fine is often suspended if they replace the tree within a specific period of time. Sometimes their court will place them in sort of a diversion where if they get the tree replaced. The frustrating part of, and so again, so you look at the spectrum of behavior. Not every actor is, their conduct is necessary on equal par. In almost all cases, though, you've got some contractor out there who did something and, you know, again, in terms of enforcement and deterrent, when you've got someone with a profit motive doing something unlawful, that again is an instance where you may be looking at a penalty which is at the higher end of the spectrum.
And finally, that part of this change in the ordinance that I do like is that the public works director would order them to, if they got a permit, to not only remove the tree, but also the stump and a replacement. And I think that, if you look around, of course, Matt's familiar with my subdivision, it's older growth, it's starting to die off now. We've got a lot of stumps and that's almost as much of a naysore as a dead tree. So that being said, thank you, Joe, for your input.
Thank you, sir.
And just to reiterate, this no man's land of tree lawn space in this ordinance, the homeowner would be responsible for paying for the cost of removal of the tree and the city would provide a replacement tree. That's the way this ordinance now is proposed to read. Any other discussion?
President, I guess I'll say, Mr. Blake, I sort of understand that you don't like the misdemeanor end of it.
Yes.
And maybe a higher fine without the misdemeanor end of it would...
Yes.
Like $1,000 maybe would be appropriate?
It's worse than the misdemeanor.
You know, I'm going to move that we put this on first reading.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-059 has received its first reading. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Managers report. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lake County Solid Waste District will be holding a household hazardous waste collection this Saturday, September 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lake County Fairgrounds. Please visit their website about acceptable items. City remains in contact with the Lake County Health District. Chief Searls and myself and others have talked to them about preparing sites potentially down the road should COVID vaccine booster shots become available to the general public. We don't know when and if that will happen, but we do expect that down the road it will. Sites have been surveyed and operational plans are in place and it looks like probably our community center, one of the rooms in our community center is ideal and would likely serve as the central location in the county for that effort if and when that becomes available. The project start date for the Mentor Avenue widening at Specialty Grocer has been postponed due to coordination with First Energy. We'll be working with the developer there to make sure that we can maintain their schedule. So we'll continue to work on that. Fairfax Drive Waterline Replacement Project work is scheduled to begin this week. It's through Oco, Ohio. The project consists of replacing approximately 3,000 feet of water line, eight hydrants, and 59 customer service lines. And that has a project scheduled completion date of December of this year. So a lot of work to be done in there. And finally, council president's park pathway work has been completed and the city is scheduling a final walkthrough of that project here very shortly. And this Friday, September 24th, is the last day for the Mentor Farmers Market at Garfield Park. So another very successful year here. I think the farmers market grows, no pun intended, every single year in participation. It was just wildly popular the last couple of years in particular, and I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that people are looking for healthier alternatives. They like being outside and shopping in places like that versus the grocery store during this pandemic period. So it's done very well for us and we thank everyone who has supported it this year. That's all.
Clerk's correspondence. Julie.
Council is in receipt of a liquor license for transfer of stock, which is a change in stockholders for TA operating LLC DBA Quaker Steak and Lube Drive Through Window and Patio at 7834 Reynolds Road. Council is also in receipt of a liquor license for a new liquor license for Adapt II LLC DBA Scramblers at 9570 Mentor Avenue. And finally, also the Mentor Municipal Court Month End Report for August of 2021.
Commission committee reports. Meeting minutes. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, August 10th, 2021. Municipal Planning Commission, August 19th, 2021. Old business. Hearing none. New business. I have two items. I don't know about others on council, but this summer I received three separate contacts from residents about skunks. And by reference, they referenced, those were all independently widely dispersed neighborhoods, and then they referenced other neighborhoods where they allegedly are having skunk problems. So just in educating myself, a few resources. Jeffrey Westrefield from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources is always a great resource. And he told me something my wife and I had learned with bird feeders, and those residents have bird feeders in the summer. The birds do have plenty of food and they get a little sloppy at the bird feeders and all that goes to the ground attracting the raccoons, the skunks, and anything else, squirrels that like those seeds. So that'll bring them to your yards and they get in a pattern of going through your yard. We sighted three this summer even though we don't have in our yard one evening. But they're saying they're not an unusual number in the county. That's from the OD and our county wildlife officer. But they did say that those areas that provide some habitat under your decks, under your sheds, you need to seal those areas off to prevent the skunks from taking up residence on your property. It was also noted that Grubex was a problem, not deterring the skunks as it normally does. That's what I've always used. And there is something about army worms coming through the area that may not be immune from the Grubex-type treatment, so the skunks are tearing up the yards. And I saw a couple of pictures where it was really impressive what the skunks had accomplished. Finally, contacting the Board of Health, they reminded me that you can trap them. There's a no-release policy, though. You can have the trapper and he has to exterminate the animal or you can trap it yourself, but no release. That means spelled termination. So lastly, the Board of Health said the rabie concern that one resident had brought up is almost nonexistent in Lake County. Their program has been so successful that I think Councilman Kirchner had talked about some participation with, but they've driven rabies to the eastern edge of the state, just a couple of counties on the Pennsylvania line where they've even found rabies, but they only test dead animals. So they just reminded if an officer does shoot an animal, not to shoot it in the head so they can do the testing just in case from the health point of view to the residents. That topic on skunks. Secondly, this morning at the Economic Development Forum for Lake County, just an interesting education point, the speaker, I didn't verify all his facts, but we had a resident asking the city to go to electric vehicles in the future. He made a point about the lithium batteries, the amount of energy it takes to extract one pound from the earth where lithium is found is significant. And to get to equate, he said, it takes 20,000 pounds of this lithium that's used in batteries to equal the energy in one barrel of oil. And the math worked out so that you'd have to drive your electric vehicle 60,000 miles, which is about the life expectancy of the lithium battery, to equal the savings of the carbon footprint they already expended in getting the lithium out of the ground. So it was a very interesting economic analysis of electric cars, good technology, but it's not there. And so if that's what you're doing relative to climate change, then you might want to look into that kind of research. It was just fascinating discussion. Any other new business? Council. Hearing none. Persons before council. We have none? There are none. Council, do we have a motion and a second?
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn. Meeting is adjourned.